Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 10th. It is 7:09 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The filing Town Council members are present in chambers. Koha, Mauer, Lapelis, Formicella, O'Rourke, Wales. Filing Town Council members here remotely, read. Filing Town Council members are absent. Persico, Duvva. Without objection, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. There ain't no objection. The consent calendar is passed. Item four, communications. I ask that items A and L, A through L, be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item five, public participation. I will begin with those who are in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate tonight during public participation? Please come down to the microphone. No takers? All right. We've got three people. Three people don't want to participate. That's fine. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate that's here online via their tablet, phone call, computer? If you've dialed in, it is star six on your phone. If you're using an online application or web browser, you need to de-select the microphone with the red line through it. Once again, is there any member of the public that is here virtually either via their, via phone call or a web browser or application that I would like to participate this evening? Please de-select the microphone with the red line through it. Or if you have dialed in, it is star six. Hearing none. Seeing none, I'm closing public participation this evening. We have no appointments this evening. Moving on to item seven, our action items. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair, any other?
We've not had a meeting in a while.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, Town Council Committee on Plan Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember O'Rourke, any update?
We have met, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, we, we did meet tonight on four resolutions and one proposed amendment that I am sure Mr. Rooney will give an update on. The first was the F-25 Highway Safety Distraughted Driving Visibility Grant. Second was the Connecticut Education Network Access Service Agreement. Third, Stanley Technologies Allegiant Access Agreement. And fourth, WMNR Job Description Updates. Wrapping the four up, all reached consensus to come to council. We did talk about a proposed amendment to the elderly and permanent, permanently disabled tax relief ordinance, which again, I am, I am sure Mr. Rooney will provide an update and a path forward for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed. Moving on to item D, our Strategic Planning Committee. We have not met since our last Town Council meeting. However, Chairwoman Cardy has reached out to me about having another information session regarding the Bear's Lee property, and I look forward to scheduling that over the next month. I believe during our pre, prior meeting, I did mention to her that we had some budget meetings so that we would resume our discussions after, after the budget. There's also a Facilities Ad Hoc Committee meeting for the Board of Education this Thursday, which I will attend. I believe there will be an opportunity for public participation at that meeting to discuss some preliminary discussions of the committee and their potential impact on the school system, the students, and parents. So I will report back at our next Town Council meeting on, on that meeting, which is again Thursday at Massey High School. Right, Steve? Yes, Massey High School. All right. And that's all I have for an update for this Treaty Planning Committee. Moving on to item E, our Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item F, our First Electments Update. First Electman Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I just want to mention, Vin Duvva ran into a stretch of bad luck, and it seems he's doing better, so we're happy to see him be on the mend. Any operations update? Public Works, warmer weather has put road repair and public works functions in high gear. DPW has been busy repairing potholes, manhole covers, and damage from storm impact. My office with the advice of DPW has opened brush drop-off for the month of March. At the Garter Road landfill, at no cost. Also, commercial companies with proof of removal from Monroe properties by residency verification can also use this option to help those citizens who do not have means to transport debris. An emergency services update. Monroe Emergency Services have been steady with call volume. Fire, police, and EMS mitigated some significant accidents in the last few weeks due to high rates of speed. Our police have been doing regular patrol functions with traffic enforcement consistently being conducted, as well as tonight, we have a grant up for acceptance to actually help that situation. Capital Projects, animal control. Our animal control facility is nearing the finish line. This project plan was reviewed and approved by Kelly Baker, the Chief State Animal Control Officer with Connecticut Department of Agriculture. Our town's officials have spoken with Chuck Delaracco, Regional Inspector from the CT DOAG, Connecticut Department of Agriculture, to arrange a meeting this week to ensure full compliance. This will allow any necessary changes to be addressed before the final inspection as per my request. CCS is the community center site. Interior renovations have started inside the community center site. As we move into warmer weather, the plans to connect technology from Town Hall, the CCS are being configured with DPW building officials and our town engineer. The excavation needed to connect the buildings will be conducted by town machine operators and highway staff. Once connected, we'll begin moving parks and recreation into their new home. Our Parks and Recreation Director, Miss Yoros, is eager for the move so she can champion revenue generating ideas and programming to make this new venture a success. Community Updates, Rotary Club Blood Drive. The Rotary Club held a blood drive conducted by Red Cross in honor of tax collector Deb Heim, under leadership of former First Electman Ken Kellogg. Monroe's, under the former leadership of former Selectman Ken Kellogg, Monroe's Rotary Club contributes a significant amount of financial help to needs of the Monroe community. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg, for your continuing altruism in Monroe. St. Augustine's Church. I attended and spoke at a breakfast at the Gaelic American Club in Fairfield along with many other community leaders. It was a tribute tires heritage to recognize the month of March and St. Patty's Day. Binky Patrol. Monroe is full of altruism, amazing people doing incredible things. Our beloved Edith Wheeler Memorial Library hosts the Binky Patrol of Southern Connecticut, who handmade 101 blankets, and these blankets are sent to those indeed around the state and elsewhere. From what I understand, this program is a nationwide program, so it's, it's pretty amazing what they do. Eagle Scout Commendation. I attended an awarded commendation for Eagle Scout Andrew A.J. Kavanaugh this past weekend. Becoming an Eagle Scout was an impressive accomplishment. A.J.'s a credit to his troop and community. And being in budget season and the grant discussions, I'm not going to go through all the grants, but I did leave a list. It says, "See below for a chart of what our special projects coordinator, grant writers currently pursuing." That should be on the next page, but as you can see, the way it was built, we left it there. But if you just want to take a look at these grants, I mean, I'll just run through them quick. Active Transportation Micro Grant Program, Healthy Communities Grant, Protect Grant, Section 5310 Grant, Connecticut Steep Grant, Brownfields Grant Program, Public School HVAC Grant Program, School Construction Grant Program, School Safety Grant Program, ARSL Grant, Scaling Community Through Archives Project. You flip the page. State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program, CDIS Program, Summer Reading Grant, Community Connectively Grant Program, National Covert Removal Replacement and Restoration Grant Program, Active Transportation Micro Grant Program, T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program, RAISE Grant, High Energy Cost Grants, and the BRIC. As you can see, as you go across, you'll see what the amounts are as well as the project and who's heading them. Many of the departments are doing work with Rosemary and the status of each one of them going forward. So some of them you can see are, have been awarded, some are applied, some are paused, some are now unavailable even though we applied for them, some are under review. Some of them have been also, we have one, one or couple of them have been paused. The BRIC and the Protect Grant have been paused. So this is the status of all the grants we're working on. I'm going to continue to do this. I'm not going to do it every month, but probably quarterly, I'll give you a grant update of where we are, what's been awarded, and what we're working on. So everybody knows that our tax money is being used in a good direction for grant writing. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our First Electments Update. And that's it for action items. Moving on to unfinished business, we have unfinished, matters of unfinished business. New business, item A, acceptance of following donations that individually exceed $1,500. I move that the Town Council accept the following donations which individually exceed $1,500. $4,509.07 from the Monroe First Foundation for creating a memorial plaque to be affixed upon the pathway pavilion and for future maintenance of the pavilion. That's directed towards Parks and Recreation. $3,000 from Santa Energy NAA Tax Credit Program. $20,250 from Service Corporation International Spatachinos and Gallagher Funeral Home NAA Tax Credit Program directed towards Project Warmth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's always humbling to see the donations, especially from Spatachinos. They've been a great partner of Monroe. They've, unfortunately, the business they're in, I'm there a little bit too often lately, but always thankful for the, the donations. Once again, it helps operations within Monroe. It helps us do some extra things that maybe we couldn't do budgetarily. So thank you again for everybody's donations.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting those donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Moving on to item B, Resolution 25-034. Madam Vice Chair.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-034. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Connecticut Education Network Access Service Agreement and any associated documents bound between the Connecticut Education Network for the town's backup internet circuit.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Technology Director would like to connect Town Hall to the Connecticut Education Network as a backup internet circus. Circuit, circus. This would allow Town Hall to be on the state's backbone fiber infrastructure and act as a backup if another internet goes down. The cost of this service is $158 per month, which will be covered under the Information Technology Budget. Our Technology Director noted that this would be a significant cost savings to have fiber run to Town Hall. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided an attached opinion letter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only that, when we did discuss this in LNA, I had had a couple of questions, one being with respect to the term, because the term was somewhat confusing in stating that it ran from the time of the signing agreement, but was also for a period of one year, starting in July 2024. So we're hoping on it is prorated to the date of the signature, not all the way back to July 1. The other is how this, how we actually get connected to this, the state's fiber, and they install that as part of this agreement. So there's, there's no additional upfront costs or anything in that front, and we get the connections to the building as part of this agreement. So that presents an even greater cost saving, not only in the present, but also for the future.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-034, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Item C, Resolution 25-035. Madam Vice Chair.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-035. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Stanley Technologies Allegion Agreement and any associated documents bound between Stanley Technologies Allegion for the automatic door replacement at the senior center.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Director of Community and Social Services has been completing several facility updates at the senior center. She has identified Stanley Technologies Allegion as an appropriate vendor to continue this effort by installing automatic doors on the men and women's restrooms. This organization also installed and maintains the motors on the entrance doors. The project will be paid from ARPA funding that was received. Stanley Technologies Allegion has provided their contact for this purpose, which has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided an opinion letter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-035, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Moving on to Resolution 25-036. Madam Vice Chair.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-036. Resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the following to be effective immediately. New part-time job description for donor relations at WMNR. New part-time job description for communications at WMNR.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion. Is there a second? Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Electman, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In 2023, this council approved a job description for a full-time donor relations and communications position in WMNR, which at that time had not existed. Kurt Anderson informed our Human Resource Director that they have been operating since 2017 with a combined part-time donor relations and communications person. Kurt has requested to split the positions to two part-time positions due to the work skills needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-036, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Item E, Proposed Amendment to the Elderly and Permanently Disabled Tax Relief Ordinance. Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my first proposal for law, to propose amendment to the elderly and permanently disabled tax relief ordinance. As you are aware, rising costs and record inflation continue to place increased pressure on our elderly and permanently disabled residents, most of whom rely on fixed income to support their housing costs. While Monroe has recognized the need to provide property tax relief to these valued residents for many years pursuant to the adoption of Chapter 470, Article 1 of the Town Code, better known as the Elderly and Permanently Disabled Tax Relief Ordinance, the ordinance was last amended in 2007, rendering the qualifying income range is outdated and inconsistent with the cost of living increases that most fixed income recipients have realized over the years. Therefore, pursuant to Town Charter, Chapter 3, Section 2, I hereby recommend that the Town Council consider my proposed legislative action, seeking to amend Section 470-5, subsection E of Section 2, of the Elderly and Permanently Disabled Tax Relief Ordinance to increase the qualifying income ranges so as to reflect the cost of living increases experienced by fixed income recipients and provide tax relief to that portion of the population as intended while leaving in place the tax reductions as percentage of property tax and minimum reductions as set forth within. As set forth within, the proposed amendment seeks to increase the income ranges as follows. The current income range, 0 to 23,600 to 0 to 30,440. Second range, 23,601 to 32,700, will change to 30,440 to 41,580. Third range, 32,701 to 47,376, will change to 41,580 to 52,70. Fourth range, 47,377 to 55,850, will change to 52,720 to 63,860. And the last range, the highest range, 55,851 to 60,000 being the cap, now that will change to 75,000, 63,860 to 75,000. In considering the need for these changes, I conferred with numerous town residents and our Director of Community and Social Services, who emphatically support the amendment as presented. In consider, considering the projected financial impact from these proposed changes, I consulted with our tax assessor and finance department, and my proposed budget incorporates same. Lastly, my proposed changes were presented to our town attorney to draft the proposed amendment and provided this letter of opinion approving same. Therefore, I respectfully request that the Town Council discuss and review my proposed amendment at your next meeting, and that the chairman authorize the scheduling of public hearing and final vote on the amended ordinance as provided in the Town Charter, Chapter 2, Section 6, at your next meeting, March 24, '25. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, First Electman Rooney, for continued discussion on this item. As Councilmember Reed said earlier during the LNA update, this was brought forward to LNA this evening. No vote had taken place, but there was a lot of great discussion and questions from our members about the parameters of this and how the Office of the First Electman and Tax Assessor came to these ranges by looking at those who have qualified in the past for these considerations, as well as increasing the, the various categories and the thresholds for those categories and comparing it to other surrounding communities. So the, at least my understanding of this is expanding these categories and threshold amounts to include more individuals that would qualify for these tax considerations. And a little bit of a break for the most vulnerable members of our community. Councilmember Mauer brought up a great point about potentially looking at in the future increasing the max assessment adjusted number if it reached a certain figure, which is outlined in the prepared change in ordinance, and looking at that in the future if this were to be changed. And then we can look at and study the impact to the municipal budget as well as our tax receipts that we receive. Our tax assessor did a phenomenal job in coming up with a max benefit situation where he was able to analyze and come up with a figure for us to consider of $440,900, as if every person in this program were to receive the max benefit. He did determine that was very unlikely, however, that would be the maximum change in our collection of tax receipts. And so at, at this point, it's, the specific ordinance isn't before Town Council tonight, and we won't be voting on it. I think it'd be appropriate to gather some consensus from everyone, and if there's consensus, then I will schedule, I will call for a public hearing on this proposed ordinance on March 24th, which will occur just prior to our Town Council meeting, as well as to get the input of our Board of Finance on this proposed ordinance, which I believe their next meeting is next week, I believe. So we should have enough time to get Board of Finance's thoughts on this from their next meeting, and then we can move forward with a public hearing on Monday, the 24th, and then a vote on the ordinance during our regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree that we had some great discussion during LNA. I'd also like to thank the First Electman for bringing this forward as the first, as your first proposed amendment. I had mentioned in LNA, this, for me, this, this idea goes back over a decade from when I was working on the Commission on Aging, and came before this council a few times looking for something exactly like this to kind of come into play. So I, it's, it's really, really great seeing something that you kind of saw in its infancy come to fruition, and so I want to thank you for, for bringing it forward. As our chairman mentioned, one of the things that I had asked about was the possibility of raising the max, maximum tax reduction per year because of the fact that assessments went up so greatly that chances are, what you, while you have more people eligible, their taxes may actually go up by a larger amount than the amount they're saving on this. I agree with the assessment of both our town attorney and our tax assessor that it doesn't make sense to do it both in the same, the same year at the same time because of the uncertainty of the numbers of, one, how many people this will make eligible, and then in which bracket they would be. So if we do this at first and make the first adjustment to the brackets, we can see what that net effect on the budget is and how many people are eligible within those brackets to then be able to make the determination of what the maximum tax reduction could be. So I agree with that approach. I think that's a smart approach, and am all in favor of this. The other thing that we discussed that I think is important to note, as we hopefully reach consensus to send this to a town meeting and to the Board of Finance for their approval, is our town attorney brought up a great point of that this is currently, as we read it, in conjunction with another program, on the state level or federal level?
State.
State level, that would be reducing the, just the permanently disabled portion of this, would also already be receiving a large, much larger tax benefit from the state. And were we concerned about double dipping in this? A lot, and our town attorney very rightly brought up that a lot of the different programs where there is a possibility of double dipping, it's specifically carved out that there can't be, and the state did not do that, whether it was by oversight or on purpose, did not do that in this. My view on it in, in this discussion is that for the most part, those who would qualify under that are permanently disabled veterans. So if we can allow them to double dip, I think that's perfectly acceptable. I believe our tax assessor said to his knowledge, it's only three people as of now, and my view is that even if it went up to 10, even if we tripled the number that it affected, and they all were getting the maximum amount, that's only a $15,000 dip on, here on our budget, and I think that's certainly something that we can give back to our permanently disabled veterans. So I, I see no point for a carve-out at this time unless the state, in revising the bill, their program purposely, purposely does carve it out, in which case I think we should reflect what the state is doing so there's no confusion. But until that time, I think leaving it as is makes the most sense, although I know our town attorney did prepare both options to present to us if needed.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Item E, the proposed amendment to the elderly and permanently disabled tax relief ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We're going to pass, conclude our discussions on this matter and move to item F, our fiscal year 26 budget vote. I move that the Town Council...
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
Before we do that, do we want to make, get a consensus and...
Oh, yes. Sorry, no problem. So I, no one is opposed to me calling for a public hearing? No?
No.
Okay. So then I will schedule the public hearing for March 24th at 6:45 PM. And that should be plenty of time for us to get the required comments. Right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Correct. The only thing I want to point out, if I may, is the Enabling Statutes, Connecticut General Statute 12129 and under Section B2, it does specifically require a recommendation from the Board of Finance in order for the legislative authority which start Town Council to consider this. So I think another important part of the consensus is that Board of Finance is aware of the council's position as, as a whole, at least, so that they can know that their counterparts in government are supporting the measures moving forward. So again, I'll make sure the First Electman through my office has a memo to the Board of Finance, so they know that they formally need to make a recommendation back to this council so that we don't waste the public hearing. I just want to put that on the record for everybody to hear.
Thank you. And again, it's positive. Yes? Everybody looks very positive. So, okay. So that is what the plan will be, and we will await Board of Finance's decision on it. Okay, moving on to item F, our fiscal year 26 budget. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 25-037. Resolve that pursuant to Chapter 8, Section 4 of the Monroe Town Charter, the Town Council approves the total fiscal year 26 municipal expenditure budget of $33,151,000. million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred two dollars, which is hereby forwarded to the Board of Finance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Co. Hut. Discussion, Mr. First Electman, your budget, so we'll go to you first.
Sorry, I was responding to an important message. Yeah, I truly believe that we've collaborated with everybody that has onus in this at a very high level. This budget took a lot of energy, as they all do. With the revale year, it was, it was a more difficult one. We had to make very, very tough decisions, but everybody who had onus in those decisions was in the room and spoken to. I truly believe with the revale and the conditions of how houses are going to deal with taxes, that this was the best route moving forward. It, the budget also encompasses community concerns, you know, the parks and their maintenance. We have two maintainers that we're bringing on to help with, Mr. Kershaw often talks about the roads, we got a paver and a roller as well, so that will free people up to do better road repair, as well as two law enforcement officers. I mean, they're covered for the last quarter, but we know that traffic has been quite unruly, and our population has changed a little bit, and we're expecting some projects that were approved. I mean, that was one of the major considerations, was the twenty-five project, and the chief was looking for a little bit of assistance there. So, we also have that, as well as we know the world in cybersecurity, right? So, that addresses that. So, I think this budget addresses, it's fiscally responsible, it's data and factual based, it's based off opinions from citizens that have come to my office. I've never denied a meeting in my office, who've sat with many people. It's considering the seniors, it's considering everybody in the town of Monroe. I believe it's a holistically, it's a good budget for everyone. There are some people that are maybe unhappy with some decisions, and I understand that. And it's hard as a First Electman to make some of these decisions, but I need to realize that my budget affects everyone. It encompasses every living soul in this town that pays taxes, and I have to take that into consideration, whether people agree or disagree with these decisions. So, I'm willing to stand behind them. I'm confident in this budget, and I hope that this body approves it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, before I make one motion to amend, and for those of you who have done budgets with me know, know that having it only be one motion is a testament to how strong I think this budget is. I really do think this is a well-put-together budget. There are certainly some areas that I think still need to be looked at by the Board of Finance, which we discussed in our joint meeting, and the Board of Finance, I know, is certainly up to that task. But overall, I think this is a strong budget, and I strongly support it. I do have one motion to make, to amend a few line items all in one motion. So, I will make that motion to amend now. I move that the following changes in the budget as presented be made. First, on page forty, reduce line ending one five three three eight five for office expenses by seven hundred fifty dollars. Second, on page forty, that's in the First Electment budget. Second, on page forty-two, in the Town Attorney budget, eliminate the line one five three three eight five for office expenses in its entirety as a reduction of five hundred dollars. Next, on page one thirty-four, which is the Fire Marshal's budget, reduce the line ending one five three three eight five for office expenses by four hundred dollars, as well as the line four five three three nine zero for operating expenses by four hundred dollars. And then finally, on page seventy-two, which is our H R, increase the line ending one five zero six two zero for H R wage adjustments upwards by forty-eight thousand nine hundred ten dollars for the purposes of coverage of a new library adult teen, library assistant position, once it is created, for a net change in the budget of forty-six thousand eight hundred sixty dollars upwards.
Forty-six eight sixty?
That's correct.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Co. Hut. Councilmember Maurer, it is your motion.
Thank you very much. The main part of this motion is that library position that was discussed at the last meeting, as well as brought up by a number of members of the public hearing. By all accounts, it seems like that was meant to be included within her budget, and it was just a misunderstanding of how it was written out, as to why she didn't realize it wasn't included in the budget to begin with. And so, that's putting in that position that the library is requesting. But since the position itself does not exist yet, the best way, as was discussed at the meeting, was to put the amount into H R wage adjustments, and then throughout the year, once that position not only is put into place, but also hired, that money can be moved into the library's budget itself. We can't really put it into the library's budget before then because there's no position to try to fund yet. The others are small, and I admit that as well. I just think it's a matter of cleaning up budgetary lines. We've come back year after year with a surplus, and so year by year, I try a little bit more to trim the fat, and sometimes it's more fat than others. This year, it's really not that much, but I try to find those items where I can so that we can make this as honest and as neat a budget as possible going forward and make our jobs easier going forward because we know things are in line with where they need to be. While it's not much, I feel like that's what we're here for, and if we're not looking at these numbers really carefully and really closely as that second check, then we are the voice of the public. So, they tend not to have this binder in front of them unless you're Steve Kirsch. And we do. So, if we can look and find those small things year by year, then I say why not do it? So, yeah, those are the, and that's the extent of my proposed changes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? First Electman Rooney?
Yeah, so, just in regards to the library position, and I know Nicole is listening, hi Nicole, but I do want to mention something that was brought to my attention in regards to the Makerspace. You know, we go through these budgets and it's dollars and it's positions, and I just, I always have a creative thought process. And we were having a conversation in my office, and we started looking into the Makerspaces and what other towns and cities have done, and we, we came across a scenario, actually, Carrie McAndrew, my office manager, came across New Haven as we were doing this research, and the Makerspace connected with the high school in the sense that they use the students to work the Makerspace. Now, you take this concept of these young intellects, these young capable people, and moving them over to the Makerspace to start really doing something amazing with it. And not that we're proposing this, but what they did in New Haven, from what I understand, is they actually made prosthetic limbs out of a three D printer. I know that sounds a little bit out there, but that's what, that's not what I'm proposing. But the concept of actually using kids in the robotics and that creative process at the Makerspace, I think would bring a nice, unique, and they're also looking for hours. They're looking for volunteer hours in their senior year. So, I made the call to Joe Cobza today, and I asked him if this is something, and he was very, I mean, we're in a time of year where he's not very excited about speaking with me, and he was very excited about that. So, he's going to talk to Bill McDonough at Robotics tomorrow. So, Nicole, I apologize for not getting a chance to speak to you about this, but this may be an interesting way to interact the high school students with the Makerspace. Not that I, not that I'm disagreeing with Nicole in that position, but I, just from my standpoint, and please don't take this personally, Nicole, we have St. Jude's, the community center site's going to open. I didn't fund Missy's program coordinator. She really needs that position. Personally, for me, if I was going to make a choice between, I would, with Nicole's position and Missy's position, I would say, let's try this high school program, see if she can get some assistance there, and then the program directors, what I, what will really be needed in the future. It'll be a big revenue source. I'm not trying to redirect this council to vote one way or the other. I just want to let you know where my mind is at in regards to this budget and this decision. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other discussion on this amendment? What I have to say is, I think the First Electment does make a very good point regarding the library position. It was very refreshing to hear people participate during our budget vote and address the desire to have more opportunities using the Makerspace. And I think the First Electman's idea and Carrie McAndrew's idea, that kind of created this potential help with our students covering the space, is, I think, a step in the right direction for this fiscal year, and that trying to get more people involved in maybe a less onerous way than adding another position at this time. I would say that, it doesn't mean that another position couldn't be added in the future, but I believe at this time, we would try to marshal what resources are currently available to the library financially through our, through part-time employees, as well as the full-time employees, and then try to use some of those new innovative ideas that the First Electment just discussed. And so, I would support the First Electment in trying out those alternative ways to provide additional staffing to the Makerspace for the next fiscal year, acknowledging that in the future, if those ways aren't as fruitful to the public, that we would reevaluate during our next budget cycle regarding that position. As for the three, well, I believe it was four budget line items, but three were taken together of a reduction of seven hundred and fifty dollars, a reduction of five hundred dollars, and then two reductions of four hundred dollars, amounting to two thousand fifty There's no need to belittle any amount of money that is being removed from the budget in the aspiration of being as fiscally responsible as possible. My position would be that these cuts are unnecessary at the time, as we haven't seen any type of abuse towards any of these office expenditure line items, and I would encourage, if there was such an abuse, that that be reported to Town Council, and so that, that those that are abusing the system can be held accountable. And I appreciate Councilmember Maurer's intentions with these reductions, but at this time, I don't know if they, they are fully appropriate, but I understand the spirit in which they have been proposed, and I appreciate Councilmember Maurer's due diligence, respecting all the reductions, as well as the request to increase the wage adjustment line by the proposed amount. I would just, one final thing that skipped my mind on the library position, is that that would be the total wage adjustment and would not include the benefits. Is that accurate?
So, I believe that number is just salary, so it would have to, maybe does not include taxes directly.
Okay.
So, it would have to be tax affected for the employer.
Thank you. As well as any additional benefits, such as health insurance and things like that. Okay, thank you. Other discussion on this item? Councilmember Roy?
I just want to go on the record that I support the First Electman's leadership on this budget and agree with how it's presented. I also support his creative remedy with regards to the Makerspace position, and we'd like to move forward.
Thank you. Other discussion on this item? Councilwoman Wales?
With regard to these motions, these ideas, I actually do like the idea of putting this library assistant in place with, coordinated with, the opportunity for students to have, and then transferring this, this position over to the Parks Rep. But this proposal seems like we're getting two job actions covered for the price of one. So, I'm in support of all that, and I agree, that's what was my question before, is that the salary is, this is just a salary. I think, you know, in my experience, that, you know, what, about thirty percent of salary goes towards benefits probably?
Yeah, health insurance alone could run between ten and thirty thousand.
Exactly, so that's what I'm thinking, it's about, it's easily a fifteen thousand dollar on that one, too. So, I agree with the combination of the two proposals here for that, for the library and the Parks Rep.
Thank you. Other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
I just need, and no other one wants to participate first? All right, hearing none, Councilmember Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments here. I do have a couple of questions for our library director, but before that, I want to address a couple of items. One, one that was mentioned was the use of, it's been a popular buzzword as of late, of if there's any abuse, to make sure to bring it forward. I don't think there is any abuse, but I do think we see sometimes in our budget is waste, and utilizing one of those other buzzwords that's been circulating lately. And what we have seen on these line items is waste, because year after year after year, we see them come in under budget, and year after year after year, we see a surplus on the town, on the town side. So, yes, while these ones don't add, amount to much, if we do harp in on those year by year by year, those little cuts, as they say, can add up and can make a difference to our taxpayers. As for the library position, I have a couple of questions for our library director, if she's still there. Nicole, are you still there?
She is. Repeat that question for me?
I haven't asked you yet. I was just asking if you were there. So, with this position, I assume that this would, person would be there for the most part during regular business hours?
Actually, this person is doing two things. It's not just the Makerspace, it's Adult Teen Services. So, I'm coming live from the library because we need a second on the floor for safety because we're doing movies tonight. So, this person would also be working nights, days, and weekends in order to, not only to do Makerspace expansion, but Adult and Teen Services expansion. So, it's a little bit of both. It's not a, not a bad idea. The Robotics Club of Massacre has been meeting here for over a month on Wednesdays, so it is, it's an easy ask that we can ask them what they can do during other days to be here. So, that's an easy thing, but the position itself is actually filling a lot of different holes.
And in filling those holes, if, without this position, even if there were some student help, I assume there's specific training, some specific training that this position would need in order for the Makerspace to actually be open and usable, not just with a student supervisor?
Right. Some, I, most of the items could have, many of the, let me rephrase it. There is a training or certificate process for many of the machines that are in there. Many public are able to come in, once they're certified on the Cricket, or let's say, the three D printer. Once you're certified on that, you can come in and just use the machines because you're certified. So, yes, we could have a volunteer watching that at that point. The most important thing is the Glowforge, which is the laser printer. That is basically laser and fire. That's where we actually have to have staff present because it is fire. So, that's the most popular machine and the one that is creating the biggest draw of our resources as well.
So, with, without this position, even with student, students there and trained students there, that equipment would not be able... that equipment would not be able to be utilized without this position when those extra hours, outside of the hours that's currently offered?
Right. We can open, we can have somebody be there. You're correct. The Glowforge, which is the biggest draw, would be... Not, we would always need staff on site for that one.
And how much does like a Glowforge? How much does that equipment cost?
I'm going to go for five thousand to seven thousand. We have two. We have two. We actually have the Glowforge itself, and we have what's called, we have a donation of an X tool, which does a little bit different kind of thing, but they're both laser kind of printers that we have, that we would have to train people on how to use. And then we have staff helping supervise editing. Helping, many times people come in and they say things, oh, I want to do this project. Here's something I want to do. And the Glowforge or the staff on the Glowforge has to actually intuit the project.
Simple, yes or no?
To make it viable within Auto... It's like, it's not AutoCAD, but it's like a programming like that where you have to do assessment of it and then watch, make sure that it is printing properly.
And then so, but basically what we're getting at here is, especially with that equipment, but with some of the equipment in general, even with students coming in and doing a joint program with the schools, which I'm all for, I think the more used, the better, it doesn't necessarily open the ability to utilize the equipment more often and for more people than it would... Than what we would get with this position would allow us to do that, correct?
I don't, I can't say a hundred percent no. I know what the public is asking for. It doesn't mean that we can't have more Saturday open houses. We can't have more demos and things like that. It's a possibility to see how it goes. But we won't know for sure because we can't, because Glowforge is the draw. We need staff for that. So there may be other things that we can offer through the Makerspace, but having a teenager here at night with a staff member, it's possible, but it's not always safe.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Based on the answers to those questions, I think it kind of goes to show that I commend that idea. I think it's a fantastic idea to have a joint program with the Board of Ed and to have students, especially those who are with the Robotics Club and other clubs similar to that, help with the library, earn their hours, possibly even figure out a capstone project through it. There's lots of things that could be done through there. But we have this expensive equipment sitting there, ready to be used, and an inability for people to use it because we don't have the staffing for it. It's very rare that I see in this town, I mean, look at our meeting, people in the public willing to come out, take the time of their day and come talk to this body, telling us what they want and what they need. They trust us to do that. But for this, people came out. People came out and told us what they want and what they need from our community. This is not a big ask. This is a small ask in the grand scheme of our budget. And I don't think it's preventative of the position in Parks and Rec. I think that certainly is something that if we're considering, then either that is already included within the budget because within wage adjustments and assumed to be a part of that because we're not, there's been no motion to add it, or not an intent of this body at this time because the money is not in the Parks and Rec budget. Either way, the two aren't connected. I think this is an important thing for our community, an important service we can provide to our community for a very small pricing. And I think when we have not only our director asking for it, but also the people within our town actually coming out to meetings to tell us that this is something that they want, we should listen.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter? Councilmember Rourke?
I just want to add that, you know, I want to point out or clarify that this entire body keeps the taxpayers' interests in mind at all times with regards to analyzing and developing and eventually voting on the budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a vote on the amendment proposed by councilmember Maurer. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Yes? All right.
Oh, wait, are you doing a roll call? I thought you were just asking.
Roll call, roll call, roll call.
Uh, nay.
Nay.
Yeah.
Disconfirm, nay. All right, Wales?
Nay.
O'Rourke?
Nay.
Formicella, no. Lappelus?
No.
Lappelus, no. Maurer?
Yes.
Maurer, yes. Kohut?
Aye.
Kohut, aye. The amendment fails five to two. Or two to five. Should be the better descriptor. All right. Moving back to our original resolution to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
All right. So this is another amendment?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to amend line one-five-three, ending one-five-three-three-eight-five on page forty for office expenses down seven hundred fifty dollars.
Page forty?
Yep, under the first selectman's budget.
That's page one-two.
Page forty.
And that's ending in one?
Five-three-three-eight-five.
That has already been heard today?
It has not. It was part of a larger motion. This is a separate motion. It's a single line item.
Okay. There's a motions, there's a second. Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Mr. Chair, I have another motion.
Okay.
I move on page forty-two to reduce line one-five-three-three-eight-five for office expenses under the town attorney downwards by five hundred dollars.
There's a motion on the table, there's a second. Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Mr. Chair, I have another motion.
Go ahead.
I move to reduce line one-five-three-three-eight-five on page one-thirty-four for office expenses downwards by four hundred dollars.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Mr. Chair, I have another motion.
Go ahead.
I move to amend item one-five-three-three-nine-zero on page one-thirty-four for operating expenses downwards by four hundred dollars.
There's a motion on... For considerations, there's a second. Hearing no second, the motion fails.
Mr. Chair, I have one more motion.
Go ahead.
I wish to, I move to increase line ending one-five-zero-six-two-zero for HR wage adjustments on page seventy-two upwards by forty-eight thousand nine hundred ten dollars.
All right, there's a motion on the tables, there's a second. A second, though. There's a second. Councilmember Kohut. And that's four-eight-nine-one-zero?
Four-eight-nine-one-zero, correct.
Okay. Councilmember Maurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this brings only one item forward, which is the increasing the wage adjustments for the purposes of, could be used for the purposes, though it's within the wage adjustments, and therefore also could be used for the position that the selectman has indicated his interest for, for the Parks and Rec. It could be utilized for either position of a new library adult teen library assistant or for another position in the Parks and Rec for the programmer as needed by the town in the next fiscal year, based off of the first selectman's suggestion. As previously discussed in the other motion, I think this is something that we should budget for now so we're not caught off guard. And we do find that we need either of those positions going forward in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting this... Oh, sorry. Councilmember Reed, we're moving to vote.
Yeah, nay.
Nay. Reed, nay. Wales?
Nay.
O'Rourke?
Nay.
Formicella, nay. Lappelus?
Nay.
Lappelus, nay. Maurer?
Aye.
Aye. Kohut?
Aye.
Aye. Amendment fails two to five. Are there any other amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-five dash zero?
Mr. Chair, I have discussion on the original motion.
Oh, sure. No problem. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stated beforehand, I do believe this is a strong budget. I will support it. There are various aspects of this budget that I believe the Board of Finance needs to look at once it comes to them. Most of those have been discussed. The ones in particular that are somewhat new that I'd like the Board of Finance to look at and after we pass this budget on to them are, one, the roads, the amount of money we put into the roads and the transfer of a decent amount of money towards town road aid. In addition to, we had done, in the past, we have done both the amount that we're doing in town road aid plus the amount that was budgeted. Now we've taken some of that away from the budgeted amount only to town road aid. I think the Board of Finance is a better body to look into those numbers more in depth to make sure that we are maximizing the amount that we can be putting into our roads with the work that, workers that we have. The other is, I'd like the Board of Finance to revisit the idea of a library adult teen library assistant in wage adjustments to make, as well as the proposal that the Parks and Direct, our Parks Director, as well as a selectman brought forward, of the need for possible programming person. And make sure that if those are things that we would like to move forward with, that the wage adjustment category can take those into consideration. They will already be looking at that line item because we're going to get some of the numbers back in from various negotiations, and so that number will have to be adjusted anyways. But in making that adjustment, I ask that they consider those two positions.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the original motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution... I'll just read it again. Resolution twenty-five dash zero-three-seven was up pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section Four of the Monroe Town Charter. Town council approves the total fiscal year twenty-six municipal expenditure budget of thirty-three million one hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred two dollars, which is hereby forwarded to the Board of Finance. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. Moving on to item G and H, which we will be taking together. I move that the town council enter executive session.
Mr. General, if I can interrupt you, those, neither of those matters are ripe for discussion, as you think?
Okay.
Just to keep as placeholders in case of running material. I anticipate the council...
Thank you very much. So we've passed both of those matters this evening. If there's no objection, hearing no objection, we are passing both item B and H this evening, which will not be considered tonight. Moving on to public participation, we have one unfinished... Well, actually, we have three unfinished matters this evening. We have proposed amendment to the elderly and permanently disabled tax relief ordinance. We have Pepper Street, item G, as well as VEMs, item H. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate on any of those three items? Hearing none, seeing none, I am closing public participation for the evening. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight, twelve P.M. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to our finance department. We've been here every step of the way, and we really appreciate both of you being here today. Thank you very much. A lot of hard work.